Hereby call the Alexander County Board of Commissioners September 9, 2019 meeting to order. At this time, we will have our invocation by Commissioner Ronnie Reese, followed by our pledge of allegiance from Commissioner Ryan Mayberry.
Father, we come to you today and we thank you for the blessings of the day. Pray that you bless this meeting tonight, give us clear minds to make decisions that would move Alexander County forward. Thank you for our protection for the day, protect our citizens and EMS and law enforcement, all those who put their lives on the line for each day to protect us and the freedoms that we have. Pray for all the things going on across our land. We just have your wagon at all. We'll give us a safe journey back to our homes when the meeting's done tonight, and we'll do all this in your name. Amen.
Pledge and Salute, Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, I have the honor of a special recognition. I'm gonna step up here to the podium. It's quite an honor for me to be able to share a few words and to present this token of our appreciation to Russell Green, my dear friend, who's a valued member of the Alexander County Government Team and really the expert on most matters. I have a bio here that I'd like to read. Says Russell is a Caldwell County country boy. He's certainly a test of that. He attended Coltsville Elementary and graduated from West Caldwell High School. He earned his Associate's Degree in Fire Protection Technology from CBCC and was a firefighter with the City of Illinois from 1984 to 1999 with the rank of Lieutenant. In 1998, 1999, Russell performed part-time fire inspections for Alexander County before becoming full-time Fire Marshal in May of 1999. He took on a role as Emergency Services Director in December of 2004, and over the years has also overseen departments of public buildings, maintenance, EMS, planning, and inspections. During his tenure, Russell has been involved in every water, sewer, destruction, you name it, project, both great and small, and has been referred to as a Fire Marshal, Water Marshal, Building Marshal, and any other type of Marshal. Maybe Marshal Dillon, I'm not sure, but certainly someone who's knowledgeable of most everything going on in Alexander County. He and his wife Kim have a daughter Brittany, and husband Bradley Daniels, and two grandchildren, Noah Clay and Naomi K. Daniels. And since 2006, I've been able to call Russell my comrade, public servant, expert in most things, but most importantly, I've been able to call him my friend. And not just any friend, but a great friend. And this title of great friend, I would certainly think resonates with a lot of you as well. We're losing a great employee, but even more, a great asset in many other ways. His honor, duty, loyalty are second to none. I recall times he was away at something at the state, and they was ragging him about something, and he told them just very proudly that he didn't work for them nor answer to the state of North Carolina. He worked for and answered to the citizens of 37,000 strong in Alexander County, and that's where he came to get his direction from. So that's the kind of man that we've had. You could easily find him serving people, fighting fires, emergencies, disasters, school safety, public safety, zoning permitting, wherever. But our loss is a big gain for the state, and particularly Region 7, where he'll be serving western North Carolina. And no matter what, though, I'm sure that Alexander County will always remain home and where his heart is. He told me today, he said, "What's this about a key? I don't want no key. I already got a bunch of keys." Yeah, but you gotta throw those keys in. And this one is symbolic, because it's a key to the county and a key to all of our, certainly all of our thoughts and prayers as he moves forward. I hope the new role presents you more time to spend with beautiful bride Kim and Brittany and Bradley and Noah and Naomi, as well as your family in Caldwell County. You'll be gone, but not forgotten. But you set a bar that's really, really high for public service, for a great employee, and for certainly wonderful friend. In my humble and honest opinion, which is not worth a whole lot, now that and usually a dollar nine will get you a cup of coffee in McDonald's, but in my opinion, you'll find some men out there that may be as good as Russell Green, but you're not gonna find one that's any better. I can promise you that. A little country boy from Coltsville's done well, and it's my honor and privilege to present this plaque and key to the county on behalf of Alexander County Commissioners. God bless you, and we wish you well. Says Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby presents this key to the county for Russell E. Green in recognition of 20 years of dedicated service as Alexander County Fire Marshal, Emergency Services Director presented September 9, 2019.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate that very much. She told me today I get to speak, so it took me about two hours this afternoon. I've got about five pages of notes.
That's all right.
It won't take long.
We don't have long.
We don't, we're not showing any pictures. We got a deal. I'll stop, I'll make it quick. How's that? No, thank you very much. It's a privilege. It's always a privilege standing before you. It's been great for 20 years. We've got great staff. My office is successful because of that staff. Our volunteers, I'm gonna get teary, if that's okay. Our volunteers do a great job. They always have, and they will continue to do that. Now, we'll tell you it's hard to find volunteers, but the ones we have in this county are second to none. So we've got great county staff, we've got great volunteers, and what's made me successful are those partnerships. Nothing I did. It's the partnerships with all these people. When Dr. Peele was at the school system, we'd try to get Mr. French or Jack Oak to buy our lunch occasionally. If you know Mr. Oak, you know that's not an easy thing to do. But I've had great partnerships, and folks, I tell everybody across the state, that's what emergency management's all about. Build the partnerships up front, get to know the people before you need them during a disaster. So I thank my family for their support. Come on.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
My wife's put up with a lot of nights away from home, me away from home, she's usually there. But LeAnn's back there from the Health Department, Gary, Bill from Inspections, Mark and Mark, you know, I got two Marks in the office, and Doug, the EMS, and said, "It's all about the partnerships." John's here from the Planning Department. We've got great folks in Alexander County. I certainly appreciate this. I'm not giving you my keys for at least 14 more days.
Well, you keep them.
I've told Jamie repeatedly, "These are the keys to the county." I pull them out of my pocket and shake them, and I said, "They don't open anything worth anything." But I left them in the car, 'cause I was afraid you might take them. I'd like to get back in my office. Working with Mr. French has been a privilege. He's allowed me to do a lot of things that most Fire Marshals don't ever touch. I've been involved with water projects. He called me in the office one day, and he said, "I need you to go to that construction meeting." I said, "Which construction meeting?" He said, "On the new jail." Two years later, I was still fussing about going to that construction meeting, 'cause that was a long two years. But it was an opportunity for me to learn a lot and to do some stuff that most people never get opportunity to do. This county's given me a lot of opportunities, and I don't take that lightly. It means a lot to me. But I thank you for the key, and I'll take these five pages of notes, and I'll come back at, you know, public comments some night, okay? But I do appreciate the gesture and the thought. I will be here for about 14 more working days, and then I'm not going anywhere. I'm just three miles up the road. But I challenge you guys, keep doing what you do, and keep thinking about all 37,000 citizens. That's what matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know how many times I've sat back there and fuss? Michael, just take one. Just take one, Michael. Don't think it does.
This time, we'll hear any Commissioners' report.
Mr. Chairman, I have just a couple things. I was able to attend a farmland preservation meeting, and it's pretty interesting, if anybody's kinda into the farmland. There's a lot of it in Alexander County, and there was a pretty big thing over there, was another form if someone's buying real estate in Alexander County. This form has to be signed that says, "You might be a half a mile from an agricultural district." So things are changing there, things are, you know, changing just another piece of paper, but if that's not signed, you know, there can be some issues. And also, I attended a workshop along with County Manager Rick French and Mr. Gary Herman, aligning counties, listening to our kinda weaknesses, strengths, things within our county, and things that we have that are problems that, you know, some other counties have. So that was pretty interesting. That was on Friday, so there's a lot of things going on, and like I say, those couple things were pretty interesting to me.
Mr. Chairman, I attended the NorCal Association of County Commissioners' meeting down in Greensboro, and of course, that was election time for that weekend. Our new president is Kevin Austin, and Kevin is from Yakton County, and he's also been very active in this county and supporting some things. And the president-elect is Ronnie Smith. The vice president is Frank Williams. Second vice president is Tracy Johnson. It was a very interesting three days. We did have one interesting thing that happened on Saturday. We had a Pulitzer Prize-winning author that was there to hold a discussion on leadership. Her name is Doris Kearns Goodwin, and she gave a speech for, she was there for about an hour and a half, then she was selling, of course, she's selling her books too, but she had an autograph session, and then she did a special presentation for the association that's on video that you can see, but going to the NorCal Association of County Commissioners. But her leadership program was, that she talked about was very, very good. And in case you do not know much about Doris Goodwin, she has written three, four books, and they deal with leadership, and it goes back to four of the Presidents of the United States, those being Lincoln, both Roosevelt's, and Johnson. And she actually worked for President Johnson. And she talked about the trials and tribulations that he had gone through in the times that he had, especially during the Vietnam War, and some things that were going on that was very hard for him to do. I challenge each and every one of you, if you haven't read the books, they're very good, and it's very, very fulfilling, and it will help you to understand more about trying to lead in hard times, and those four Presidents led during some hard times. But the convention was very good, the facilities were good, the food was good, and most of the presentations were very, very good, and enjoyed being there. Appreciate the opportunity.
I was at the Library Board today, and I would like to share that the Friends of the Library Book Sale will be October 2nd to the 5th, so if you could, go by and support the book sale. It's an annual fundraiser for the Friends of the Library and for the library, so it's a really good, good thing to do. Also, I was driving from Hickory Friday, and my sister is moving to the area, and when I crossed the bridge, I started to tell her about the Bethlehem community in the area, and then I started to tell her about what all, the vision that's been cast for that area. And coming across the bridge and thinking about that, it just became extremely surreal. I really appreciate all the hard work and effort that everyone's put into the planning and for the vision of what that part of our community is gonna be like, and it was quite exciting being able to, you know, to share with her some of the things that I thought that were gonna be taking place there. But it was just, it just happened. We were just driving across the bridge, and she was new to the area, and I thought, wow, you know, that's, that's really neat that these are the things that are envisioned for this area. It's gonna be really nice. So I commend all of you for that. I appreciate the work that you've done. Any other reports? At this time, I would like to make an amendment to our agenda. If you notice on the agenda, we have listed as the closed session before the Consolidated Human Services Board, and I would like to recommend that we move the closed session to after the Consolidated Human Services Board.
Make a motion to approve the change.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor, motion passes unanimously. Then at this time, we will go to public comment, which we have none, and, oh yes, I'm sorry. We need to make a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the change as noted.
Thank you, sir. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor, please raise your right hand. On motion passes. Now, we have no public comment, and at this time, we'll have John Pilkington, Director of Planning and Development, to share with us the Bethlehem Community Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the boards. Tonight, we have a presentation for you of the Bethlehem Community Plan. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, as you come into Bethlehem over the next five, 10 years, you're gonna see a lot of changes. And coinciding with that, last budget year, when I was putting my budget together and giving thoughts to some things that were going on, the Highway 127 widening project was, is a very important project in Alexander County. In fact, it'll be the only four-lane road, once completed, that exists in Alexander County. And with that, I thought there was very much a need for the Bethlehem community to put together a community plan to address issues such as land use and economic development and transportation along those lines. So in July 2018, the Board of Commissioners approved a contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments for them to provide technical assistance in writing and drafting a Bethlehem Community Plan. Along with that contract approval, the board appointed a Bethlehem Advisory Committee made up of Bethlehem citizens, as well as business owners, to be a part in developing that plan. There are a few members here tonight, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna read everybody's name that was on the committee, and then those members that are here, if you wouldn't mind standing up. Bud Kaywood, who is the chairman of the, chairman of the committee, Andy Jack, who served as vice chair, of course, Commissioner Mayberry served on the committee, Ashley Starnes, he's also the Chief of Police of the Bethlehem Fire Department, Betty Long, Jim Price, John Dalstrom, Randy Buck, Steve Brown, I don't know if Steve snuck in here, Susan Osborne, and then Virginia Austin, who is staff for the Planning Department, also attended every one of the meetings, took minutes, and did the most important thing, which was provide the refreshments at all the meetings. So that seems to get your attendance up when you, when you feed everyone. So I appreciate all these people participating and attending those meetings and owning this plan and making it part of theirs and helping provide a vision for the Bethlehem community. So thank you, guys. As I said, when we, when the contract was adopted, a lot of times, I feel like planners actually don't get to plan, we react. Things start happening, and then we have to react to make sure that they don't get out of hand, and we don't get to do a lot of planning. This is one of those things where me as a planner, myself, you know, actually gets to participate in an actual planning process to be involved in seeing future growth and the future of a community come together. A land use plan is a tool for the county commissioners to use when making land use decisions. Everything that is in this plan is a recommendation. Nothing in this plan is, is a regulation or becomes any sort of law if the plan's adopted. Any changes that are made from a land use standpoint have to be done to the county zoning ordinance, as well as the county zoning map. And any and all of those changes would also require a public hearing, and would be noticed in the paper and notified if property owners need to be notified. As noted, one of the biggest projects coming up in the next few years is the Highway 127 project, the Highway 127 widening. This plan is in correlation with that, as well as the proposed sewer expansion that the county commissioners have approved on the eastern boundary of Bethlehem. And with that said, the committee held two community meetings. Held one in December of 2018. We had approximately 68 people attend. We conducted what we call a SWOT analysis, which identifies strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats within the community. We had a lot of good feedback from that. The committee took those recommendations and adopted those and put those in the plan, and all of those results of that plan are actually located in the appendix in the back of the plan, so you can see what everyone in the community had concerns about, liked about, you know, and had recommendations for as well. There was a second meeting held just last Tuesday on the third. We had, by count of the signing sheet, approximately 125, but we believe there was close to 150 people in attendance to take a look at the final draft of the plan. We got a lot of positive feedback from that. I think a lot of people thought it was a meeting about the Highway 127 widening, but even still, they hung around, looked at the plan, made comments, interacted with committee members and staff as well. And if we go to the next slide, I'm gonna give you a, and I've kinda said all this on the first, with going over what I just did, so, you know, noting that this committee met for, once a month for the previous 12 months to develop this plan, contracted with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, Johnny Ware, who is the senior planner at the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, Ashley Kell, and Hunter Nestor are community and regional planners who also participated in the meetings and helped draft, draft the plan. Next slide, please, and those are your committee members. Next slide. This was the planning study area. This study area is actually a little bit larger than the census tract that encompassed the Bethlehem community. What you will notice in the plan, the demographic section gives demographics in relation to the actual census tract for the Bethlehem community. It's hard to extrapolate any data from partial census tracts to get accurate, more accurate population and any other data. So the demographic section you see is, it only talks about the Bethlehem census tract area and not, may not necessarily include all of the actual land area of the plan. The data in the demographic section, as noted, includes population, race, ethnicity, the age, income, poverty, employment, education, and housing. And those are, that's kinda the beginning part of every plan, to give you an idea and set up a background for what, what you're dealing with in the community and how the plan would develop from that. And with that said, if you have any questions to me, I'll be happy to try to answer them. If not, I'm gonna pass it off to Bud Kaywood, who was the chair of the committee to discuss transportation and a few other chapters. So thank you again.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and just to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to create this committee and spend this past year gathering all this information. It's been, it's been a great opportunity for all of us to work together and put together a plan, to, to some extent, a comprehensive plan that will be some guidelines moving Next slide, please. I'm gonna talk to you about transportation, and one of the things that I wanna mention is, it's not just vehicle transportation. It's pedestrian transportation, it's cycling transportation. All that stuff is gonna come into play when we, when that widening process takes place. Next slide, please. The, what you're looking at right here are the funded highways, the highways that are gonna be funded primarily with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and the ones that we're gonna talk about tonight are gonna be Highway 127 primarily, and then, and we'll kinda work the whole process around that. Next slide, please. Okay, these are the major thoroughfare improvements that are gonna be in Bethlehem and the rest of the county. You've got your legend in front of you, the map there, and if you look over to the side, you'll see that the dotted, the red dotted line or the Boulevard needs improvement, and then the gray and black dotted line are other thoroughfares that need improvement. Those are part of the 2045 Comprehensive Transportation Plan. So all that's part, that's inside that study area. Next slide, please. Okay, our transportation recommendations, the strategy here is really to maintain a good working relationship with DOT in order to coordinate land use and transportation planning for new and updated roadway corridors. I'm not gonna go into the key actions in each of these sections, 'cause you do have that in front of you, and there's no, you know, we got a big agenda, and there's no reason to go through all that. But one, one item that I do wanna mention is, you know, under the key actions is B, where it says, "North Carolina Highway 127, Cloniger Mill to Ritchie Road." The reason why I wanna mention that is because Cloniger Mill and that section right there coming down to the lake with the widening of 127 and the additional bridge is gonna be a major link back into Hickory. Not that we need to go to Hickory to do our shopping, but hopefully to build that, build that community that we have in Bethlehem to bring people from Bethlehem, I meant from Hickory, into Bethlehem. Next slide, please. This narrative is to incorporate adopted plans to create a community-oriented environment that encourages walking while also supporting other modes of transportation. And if you notice, item number five down at the bottom, promote bicycle and pedestrian facilities along the programmed North Carolina Highway 127 improvements from Cloniger Mill Road to Ritchie Road. This cycling and pedestrian greenways is a growing trend in just about every committee, and that needs to be part of this process. Next slide, please. Resources and services will, will focus on trails, blueways, bike and pedestrian facilities. Blueways, that's, that's another area that we've got opportunities with the waterways that we have, not only on Lake Hickory, but also some of the creeks that we have, and as far as creating trails. So the Little River, the middle Little River, those can all be a blueway, opportunities for kayaking and canoeing. And Commissioner Mayberry, we were, we did a kayak trip, what, probably?
Five or six years ago.
Five or six years ago on the Little River. Took us all day long. We put in on, on Highway 90 and ended up in Millersville. So, so these are opportunities that we need to look at moving forward. Next slide, please. Okay, this is, it's hard, hard to see this, because it covers the whole area that we're, that we're looking at right here. But if you look closely in there and look at your legend, it's gonna point out these areas that have, you've got the waterways in there, and then also, it's got all of your sewer and water improvements in there. Next slide, please. This is the recommended bicycle. This is the recommended bicycle, blueway, and pedestrian trail, trails. And I'm not going to go through all of them, but you can see by looking at the legend again, and this, these are pretty simple to understand. The main corridor there on 127 has both the sidewalk and the multi-use path through there along that four, the four-lane road. Next slide, please. Your resources and services recommendations, your narrative here, your strategy is to explore new recreational opportunities for the community and its citizens. And then, and then in number two, to identify and acquire land in strategic locations to encourage open space preservation, greenways, parks, and other passive recreation opportunities. Next slide, please. And this is part three, to maintain relationships with Alexandria County, City of Hickory, and the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. Next slide. Your natural, cultural, and resources in our area primarily is going to be Lake Hickory. I mean, we all know that. And that's, that's where our economic development is going to come, especially in Bethlehem. And it's our responsibility to research the background and historic information concerning environmental impacts and the historic landmarks. Next slide. This one here is pretty much going to show you all of the waterways that we have. Next slide. And this is the conservation planning for green growth. I know that the last county commissioners' meeting, there was a report by the new Historic Properties Commission. This is, this is imperative for us to protect our historic properties and identify them. And although we don't have many in Bethlehem, I think we only have one that has been identified. It needs to be protected as well as all the others in the rest of the county. So, I think this, this is important. And as, as we go through this process, we're going to begin to identify other properties that are important to us. So, next slide. Natural resources, resources recommendations. The narrative is to protect Bethlehem's natural environment through orderly growth management techniques that preserve the rural areas of the community and safeguard its natural resources. And I've made a note here for myself that just says primarily the lake because that is critical in our development. And then in the key actions, I also highlighted one that I wanted to mention was the open space preservation, greenways, parks, and other recreation opportunities. And that's my part of the program. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Andy Jack.
So now we're with the Economic Development Tourists. This is basically how we're wanting to see Bethlehem grow. So, next slide. So, if you look at the map there, Bethlehem, you'll see the map of 127, the community's primary economic development land, lifeland. You've got Lake Hickory, wildlife access, and then Bethlehem Star. The map to the right, that's just telling you the distance between where Bethlehem is located for any of the main highways in 321, Highway 40 and 321. Next slide. So, we want to provide an economic development for information and legal assistance to help recruit viable businesses and services and industrial activities in our area. Next slide. We want to work to achieve, to attract young adults and new residents and tourists. We want to make sure that we can attract people to come to our area. We want to evaluate available properties throughout the community and encourage commercial development projects in appropriate areas. The land use and growth, the growth management, this is the most important chapter of the plan. This recommend, these recommendations are based on the availability to access water and sewer. That's important for our area. Primary focus is on the area within the scope of the DOT. So, widening of the project for 127, the larger parcels along the lake and areas where sewer's available, the expansion is planned. Village Common District, that's where we focused on mainly for the community along 127, Highway 127. We would like to have these carried, these recommendations carried out would require amending the county zoning ordinance. Next slide. So, that map is our current zoning map, as you can see. The next slide will show you, that is our recommended land use for future land use development. We vote, we focused on the village common areas, which is along Highway 127, so you can see that in the red highlighted areas, what we'd like to see. Next slide. So, we've reviewed and updated the land use regulations to ensure that it's compatible for desired types of development outlined in this plan. Next. We'd like to establish an area for a commercial center in the community and create a destination that encourages recreation and economic development. And you can see that in the plan. Next. I think that's it, isn't it? Any questions you may have for the plan itself? Thank you.
I'll entertain any questions from a staff level. And of course Johnny Ware's here and he could answer some questions as well in regards to what the COG did in providing the information and putting the plan together. As noted, again, these are all recommendations. Any of these changes would have to be done through zoning and land use regulation, which would require public hearings held before the county commissioners. And this is, this plan is specific to the Bethlehem area. So, any recommendations, any changes to zoning would, would require a section of the zoning ordinance to be devoted to, you know, the Bethlehem community in regards to, most specifically, that, that Village Commons District. We used the word village. The committee really decided that they wanted to have an identifiable, something that was identifiable and unique to the community. And they liked the use of the word village and Village Commons. And so they went with that. As noted on the future land use map, you can see where we identified that all along the Highway 127 corridor. And those, yes, sir.
While you're on that.
Yes, sir.
You, you got a broad picture of that. What's, what's a more detailed thought of what division that's going to be, the Village Commons, I mean?
So, one of the key strategies in the plan, it's actually the, I think it's the first one on the land use section, I'll read it, or excuse us, on the land use section number two, which is the last page of the presentation. Number one, it says, "Add a new Village Common Districts to include architectural features such as additional sidewalk structural, structural aesthetics and facade development." So, it would, it would key on more of a, a more well-designed development within either vacant commercial properties or redeveloped property.
I guess, well, maybe clarify my question a little bit. You know, if you're in Raleigh or Huntersville or somewhere, you drive in and then there's gas stations in there and it's all in, kind of enclosed, is that, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's, it would, the recommendation is to develop, or the, the committee would like to see that thoroughfare, especially from the bridge past Rinkton Dam Road, to develop into an area where there's more architectural design guidelines for new development.
But then you're into, you're turning in.
Yes.
To a space, really it's not so much the, the road space, it's on the inside of the road space and then you're in a kind of an open.
Correct. That's correct. Yes, sir. That's correct. Yes, and well, that was, another recommendation in here was for village signage, which would be signage that's more directional to specific, I'm just totally lost for words. Areas that would be of, areas of interest, there we go, within the Bethlehem community.
So, they want to put up a sign, Bethlehem Star, that, you know, down this way, the drugstores this way, you know, just some, and it's cohesive, that, you know, the sign here is going to be the same sign that you're going to see a quarter of a mile away, or the same design. And, but what it is, and I limited myself to the first few meetings because I didn't want really to have too much input on this. I wanted this to be from the citizens of Bethlehem. And so, you know, I went to the first few meetings and then I kind of pulled back my time from it because, like I said, I didn't want to have too much input on it. And I wanted this to be a vision from, you know, the citizens there. And when we did the comprehensive plan in 2008, it was pretty much the same things that we saw then that were talked about that are in this. There's, there's some differences, but, you know, there's a lot of the same things. So, it's a, it's just the vision of what the people of Bethlehem would like to see the area look like and grow like and where they want services at and, you know, what they want to see the place look like 20 years from now.
So, basically what I'm seeing here, I mean, you may be familiar with what they're doing in Cheryl's Ford, the Village of Cheryl's Ford now, and the things they're doing there. I think it's going to be a great concept of what they're trying to accomplish with the way they've divided up the land, showing what's coming on like a Starbucks or Chick-fil-A or some of those type things that are moving into the Cheryl's Ford area now because they're calling it the Village of Cheryl's Ford. Very interesting, you know, it's very interesting. I'm surprised to see that happen, but Cheryl's Ford, as you all know, is just bursting, same as Bethlehem. And some of the things that I've seen in here, I think the concept is good. As you all know, in the Bethlehem area, Alexander County contracts with the City of Hickory to take care of the water and the sewer. And we fight as hard as we can to do everything we can with the cost of all that. And you're going to see some, in my opinion, fast improvements within the next six to eight months. And I'm looking forward to that happening. I think once that takes place, I think you'll see these things start happening. I think the work that you all have done has been just totally outstanding and I look forward to seeing good things come out of it. The important thing behind all these things is the fact that the community stays involved. The community's got to be active, proactive, and they've got to make sure that they take a step in their community to make their community the kind of place they want it to be. And I appreciate the effort and the study that you all have done. I think it's just really good, just really tickled to see this. And I know that Tyler has a group now, Hidnite has a group, and the visions are there. And I think folks want to see the young people stay at home and be here. And the thing that I would say, young folks, I like to say the young folks get more involved. Our 35 to 45, we need you out here. We need you fighting and doing the things we can to make our communities all over Alexander County and really all over this country to be better. So, I just want to tell you, thank you for the good job. Looks good.
And in regards to the water and sewer, there's some verbiage in here, we're going to have to reword it because it doesn't read exactly the way it should, so.
Right. And there's a number of things.
Right.
And resources and services that need to be clarified.
Yeah.
I mean, a number of things and several things that just aren't true that need to be clarified in pages, in some of those pages.
There were some things that I had noticed that this needed to be clarified and everybody needs to sit down together and clarify those things so that they'll be right, like, you know, Alexander County EMS and things of that nature. And, and it's just the finer points, the fine tuning it to know who does what and how it's done. And I think that if we get those things done, I think it's going to be just, I'm thumbs up. I mean, I don't know what else to say, you know? But there's a couple of things in there that I think the wording probably needs to be changed, that who supports, who does.
Right.
And you just do it for clarification.
Yes. And we can take care of those things.
Right, and I know that, so.
And I want to say too, thank you to all the staff and the people that were involved in this. We appreciate you guys being there and taking time out of your busy schedules to do this. And I think we got a good cross-section of people that were members there and, you know, from, from business leaders to, you know, community people and it was a good mix of people and appreciate all you did.
And having, having been employed by the Council of Governments, I was involved in a number of plans, comprehensive plans, land use plans. And this plan, in my opinion, the, the work that the community did, or the, excuse me, the committee did, that COG staff did, this one has turned out really well. I was very pleased with the, you know, the work and the ideas that came out of it and the way that the Council of Governments was able to get the ideas down on paper. One of the things, and without researching, Andy can probably say, all of these, the pictures were all, were drone footage that was done, provided to us free of charge, and the gentleman's name is?
Brandon Brumley.
Yes, Brandon Brumley. So, he provided all these aerial photos to be included in the plan. So, we want to thank him and we appreciate him doing that. And we tried to hit, you know, the highlights of what's in Bethlehem now and.
And, and I'll add to you one other thing. And just like Chairman Peel said, there's going to be a lot of things happening in the future in Bethlehem. And this is more of a way to be proactive on what's going to happen instead of being reactive because you don't want to be behind the eight ball and trying to catch up when we've got a four-lane highway coming in and we've got a new 450-unit subdivision planned and 110-unit apartment building that's under construction right now. So, this is going to get us a little bit ahead.
Planned cities are far more organized than unplanned ones.
Yes, exactly right.
Mr. French?
I mean, there's a lot of things I could say, but I think there's a number of things here that need to be clarified before there's a final print because it's misleading about utilities and about some of the resources that the county provides to the area. And that's, I mean, I just think that's important to get it right. But I pointed some of those things out to John prior to the meeting, but I think that's important.
So, do we want to go ahead and correct those and come back, table this?
That's entirely up to you.
Or approve it with technical corrections approved through you?
That's entirely up to you.
I would say, guys, I would say, let's go ahead and prove this and then come back because this is just a, this is not changing our zoning laws or anything else. This is a vision for the future and we can make those changes next meeting. We've got everybody here from the committee, or not everybody, but we've got a lot of people here from the committee and.
I would like to say that we could entertain a motion to approve the plan with the technical corrections that John and Mr. French go through. And, and I'm good with that if, if they, if they're good with it and certainly would entertain a motion to that effect.
I would make a motion that we approve the Bethlehem community plan's vision and that we come back at our next meeting with some additional changes to that to make it a little more, I guess, applicable to everyone.
There are the motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand, motion passes. So, we'll correct those changes and then look at, it'll be approved with the changes.
Well, what we'll do is we'll bring them back to you, we'll show you what was there, how it was. how we corrected it to, I think, we'll, you know, clarify a lot of things and, you know.
Certainly not to discourage any of the good, hard work and the amazing vision that's been cast through all that, details, but as we all know, the devil's in detail sometimes.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for your hard work, we appreciate it.
At this time, we'll have Mr. Gary Herman, Public Information Officer, to share with us a Hometown Strong report from August 26.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for letting me be here tonight. We're here to talk about the visit by the governor's Hometown Strong team. Like I said, that was on August 26, and we held that meeting at the Rocky Face Park multipurpose building. Really good meeting, a lot of good collaboration, and hoping for some good things to come out of that. So we all know that in small communities, you solve problems by bringing everyone around the table to solve these things. So that's the concept of the Hometown Strong program, as they bring state government to your community, discuss our problems, our needs, and our priorities. The meeting was a great opportunity to connect with these state agencies and these staff members who can go to bat for us in Raleigh. They have visited 28 of 80 rural counties in North Carolina to date, and.
See if we can get a budget passed, that'd be a good.
Well, yeah, that would be helpful. But we thought it was kind of cool that Alexander County was, you know, one of the first ones, so we appreciate them coming here. It's hard to believe, we had 25 representatives from the state government, the staff members from representing administration, commerce, environmental quality, health and human services, information technology, public safety, revenue, transportation, and the offices of state human resources and state budget and management. So we got all those people in one room with some key staff members to discuss some important topics. Leading off the discussion was our EDC Executive Director, David Eisenhower. He brought the team up to speed on economic development in the county, just to kind of give them an overall broad picture. He told them about the major industries here, and briefly discussed some projects in the Alexander Industrial Park. He also talked about the state's tier system, which I'm sure you all are familiar with. Alexander County is a tier-two county, so we don't qualify for some grants. For example, there's a broadband grant called the GREAT Grant, and that stands for Growing Rural Economies with Access to Technology. Being a tier-two county, we're not eligible for that grant. So that was one of the things that we mentioned to them, we'll talk just a little more about that in a second. So Mr. Eisenhower said, you know, we're proud to be a tier-two county, we don't have a problem with that, but it's hard to imagine us being a tier-two, and, you know, some of these more prosperous counties also being a tier-two. So that was kind of one of the messages that we expressed to this team. Going back to the broadband, Mr. Eisenhower talked about the broadband pilot program that we have with open broadband, which is going to provide internet service to a portion of the county, the unserved and underserved areas, and he talked about the large-scale broadband project that I know you guys are interested in, if we can just find a way to make it happen, because it's a very much-needed resource for our citizens here. Again, we talked about the GREAT Grant, that we're not eligible for that. So they're going to go back and talk to some folks and see if, you know, what they can do for us. Russell Green, Emergency Services Director, he was next. He inquired about how some counties are receiving grant funds for courthouse renovation or construction. The team said the proposed 2019-2020 state budget includes $26 million in non-recurring funds for courthouses. Mr. Green said, "We haven't heard anything about that." So they're going to speak, they advised us to speak with our legislators, and advised us to possibly, if we could, have a cost estimate for what we'd like to do, and that could move things forward a little more quickly. Mr. Green also informed the group about the flood that occurred in June, resulted in 15 closed roads, two of which still remain closed. He said the Alexander County Soil and Water Conservation District applied to the USDA for funding for stream restoration, and he said he would like their help on getting that project moving forward. Leann Wisnet, our Consolidated Human Services Director, advised the team of a problem that is negatively impacting Alexander County's budget, that being medical bills for county jail inmates, and you all are very aware of that. So right now, Alexander County is having to pay approximately $400,000 in medical bills for a few inmates who have serious medical conditions. Currently, there's no program in place to pay for this, so it falls back on us and other counties, and Medicaid has not been helping us there. So the team said they will take our concerns to Raleigh. Connie Kincaid, EDC Business Development Manager, she spoke about a need for establishing consistent ZIP codes for counties. Alexander County, of course, has ZIP codes that are shared with adjacent counties, and it seems that our sales tax revenues may be being distributed incorrectly in these areas, which is alarming and proving costly to us. Representative of the Department of Revenue was present, and he said that state auditors can help us determine if sales taxes are going where they're supposed to go, and he's going to continue to work with Ms. Kincaid on this issue. County Manager Rick French updated the team on several topics. He said that Vaya Health is the mental health service provider for Alexander County. Construction is scheduled to begin on a new mental health facility later this year. Mr. French also informed them of the upcoming NC 127 widening project, which we just saw some information about. He said that while the DOT will move existing utilities, that being like water and sewer lines, the county will likely want to upsize those lines at that time. And while we're thankful for the zero and low-interest loans that we have for some current projects we have going on, we'd like some help with the upsize of those lines as well. Mr. French also told them about the Alexander County Courthouse Park in downtown, which will have a stage, a playground, and other amenities, and the county hopes to apply for a part-of-grant next year to help with the cost of that project. So based on the conversations that we had, the Hometown Strong team will work on these issues and priorities, and then they'll reach back out to the county, whether it be officials or staff, and they'll tell us their thoughts, ideas, and hopefully provide some solutions. And that's my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, or I'll try to answer.
I'll mention one thing, what you mentioned about the, oh, two things. What you mentioned about the inmate expenses, that's not a choice that the Alexander County Commissioners or County Manager or the Sheriff or anyone else has. We have to pay for those expenses the way the law is currently written, that we understand, and we're in talks with attorneys on this matter every week. So, yeah, this is, this is not something that we have control over. Also, about the DOT moving utilities, Mr. French, they don't pay 100% of that cost to move those utilities, do they? Is it 100% of the cost?
They pay, they pay 100% relocation of existing utilities.
Existing, okay, okay, all right.
It's 70/30 on the sidewalks and other things.
That's what I was thinking about there, okay, 70/30, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Some good information there. I'll also tell you that in the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners meeting, we had a large, nice discussion with, about the Medicare, Medicaid inmate cost and what it was doing affecting counties. It's not just Alexander County, we've got a county close by to us that's getting, that's costing them a tremendous amount also. So I look forward to things happening on that sooner or later.
Here, if you could elaborate a little bit on the ZIP code confusion.
Well, you know, we have Moravian Falls addresses in Alexander County, we have Granite Falls, we have Hickory, and right now, it's somewhat unclear, and Connie knows more about it than I do, but just the little bit that I do know, we're concerned that places with those ZIP codes, the money might be flowing to those counties or those cities versus staying in our, in our boundary.
And we're running our ZIP codes the other way, too, so.
Yeah, yeah. So it could work, it could work either way, but definitely worth investigating and making sure the money's going where it's supposed to be going. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Further questions? Thank you, sir, that was very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll recognize Mr. Rick French for a resolution in support of funding to meet the mental health, intellectual development disabilities, and substance use disorder service needs of the citizens of Alexander County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The resolution is in your packet, recommending that all the counties in Vaya's Ketchikan area, there are 22, adopt a similar resolution. Several things to point out, the North Carolina General Assembly has reduced state funding for behavioral health services, known as single-stream funding, by more than $458 million statewide over the past four years, including more than $48 million in cuts to single-stream funding to Vaya alone, and at the same time requiring Vaya and the other, Vaya and other LME MCOs to continue offering the same level of service as before the reductions. If the state budget was approved as proposed, nine more million dollars of single-stream reductions would occur to Vaya, and that means that the General Assembly will have cut $57 million in single-stream funding from Vaya. That's why there's some services are reduced or not available. And we would like to ask that the General Assembly stop cutting Vaya Health state single-stream funding, so that the funds can be utilized to strengthen access to healthcare services for the mental health, intellectual, and developmental disabilities and substance abuse disorder needs of the uninsured and the underinsured of Alexander County, and we'd like to recommend the resolution be approved as presented, Mr. Chairman.
We've heard the recommendation. Do you have a motion to support the resolution in support of this?
Make a motion to approve the resolution in support of funding to meet mental health, intellectual development, or disabilities, and substance use disorder service needs of citizens of Alexander County.
Second. And since we have discussion here, I just wanted to ask a couple questions. People, most people listening or watching, or that don't do either one out there, don't understand what Vaya Health is, and it's a huge part of western North Carolina and Alexander County, and Commissioner Reese is on that committee, and County Manager French, and they do a lot of good work, and it's very important. And I think what the General Assembly is doing is they don't understand how important it is, for one thing, but also how the funding works. So I know that there's a good backstop, bank account that Vaya has, but that's all, just like our fund balance, you've got to have a reserve fund there, because there's a lot of money goes in and out of there. So they don't understand, and I hope we're going to send this to our legislators and the governor.
We are.
And I hope we get a unanimous vote on this.
Question I've had for years, Mr. French, I'm sure you can't answer it, I'm sure you have an opinion, though. Mental health was reformed in 2001, and it's been a mess ever since. It doesn't take a genius to see, but it just seems like it just becomes more and more of a train wreck, it seems like, every year. And for all those years, I mean, has it, not the service itself, but the support and the, from the state, and has anything really changed since they've reformed?
I mean, I think so. I think there's been a lot of positive changes, but you can't continue providing services if the funds are reduced, and they keep reducing funds and reducing funds. At our last meeting, there was discussion about some shelters that were going to have to be closed because the funding is reduced, and that's not Vaya Health, it's the state doing that. One thing to point out is, it's the funds that all the LME MCOs had, that was maybe, you look at it like a fund balance, those, that money cannot be touched by Vaya. That money is basically insurance for the General Assembly, so if these agencies go under, they pay their bills and they take care of their providers. There's just a lot of misinformation about what goes on. I think the service would be a lot better if the General Assembly would stop taking so much money away from it, it's almost impossible to do what they're supposed to do. So, I mean, there's a lot more we could talk about, but.
There's a need for more mental health services, not less.
Absolutely, exactly.
There's a big problem with mental health that they've not been able to figure out the answer to.
Well, when you start cutting as much money as what's being cut here, there's a lot of people going to be left outside the door that are used to having those services, and when they go away, you know, somebody's going to have to pick it up somewhere.
It'll end up being at the local jails, the hospitals, you know, it's.
Which is a symptom of the other problems that we're facing.
Right.
That's correct.
It's going to be paid, it's just going to be paid in a different way.
It shifts the cost to counties.
Right.
So we have a motion and a second on the table, any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand, motion passes unanimously. At this time, Mr. French will now share with us a resolution authorizing the surplus and sale of service badge to certain retiring employees.
This is the resolution, as you so stated, for disposing of our county property, and what it does, it, the Alexander County Board of Commissioners authorizes the sale of the service badge issued to Alexander County Emergency Services Director Russell Green upon his retirement from employment with Alexander County for the amount of $1 as honoraria in recognition of his 20 years of dedicated service to the citizens of the county.
Move to approve.
Second.
I don't see why we'd even charge him the dollar. He's done a good job, and I think really we ought to name it surplus and give it to him myself.
Can you legally do that?
I'll pay his dollar.
Yeah, we'll pay his dollar.
We'll pay his dollar.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Motion and second, any discussion furthermore? All in favor, please raise your right hand, motion passes. Mr. French will now share Budget Ordinance Amendments 10 through 12.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment 10 is to increase Health Department budget for Duke Endowment grant funds carried forward from prior years. It must be used to establish an integrated behavioral health program. Total grant funding will be $175,000 over two years. The Health Department will add other revenue sources to continue the program after the grant ends. Budget Amendment Number 11 is to increase 2019, 2020 special preparation to Carolina Land and Lakes to adjust the detention center revenue line items account for PayPal telephone revenue in a separate line item rather than miscellaneous revenue. And Number 12 is to increase the ESS budget for an additional adult Medicaid part-time position.
You've heard the amendments. I hereby entertain a motion to approve said amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Budget Ordinance Amendments Number 10, Number 11, Number 12, as stated.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand, motion passes unanimously. At this time, Mr. French will share with us the County Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple things to mention, we've started the community recreation meetings. We started the first one at Bethlehem Park, and we didn't have any one attend, but we've had, we have, still have several more where anybody can attend. There's a meeting at. There's a meeting on September the 10th in Stony Point at 6:00 PM. There's a community recreation meeting on September 12th at Dusty Ridge. And there's also one on October 3rd at Rocky Face Park. And all those meetings are at 6:00 PM. We held our pre-construction meeting on the water project that we've all been waiting so, waiting for. And our water project will begin on September 23rd. The contracts have been signed and approved by the Commissioners, so we're anxious to get started. There's a few other things that we'll be doing, and some information will get to you. But the project will start on 23rd. And that's all I have, except for a few things for closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Had opportunity to look at your consent agenda. At this time, we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda, as stated.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we will now move towards our consolidated Human Services Board meeting and recognize Ms. Leanne Wisnick.
Thank you, Chairman Peel. It's hard to believe this, this is our second consolidated Health and Human Services Board meeting. Our advisory board met last month and had this even more detailed orientation than your last meeting. And I'll give you more updates at the next meeting. We're trying to keep it consolidated as far as the agenda as well. And of course, the first thing we have to do is put public comment on there to meet accreditation. I don't have anybody up. Jamie, did you have anybody for public comment for our consolidated board meeting?
Stu.
I don't think so. Okay, we'll move right into our agenda. Medicaid Managed Care, we talked a little bit in the last meeting about it. And with the state budget still not passing, we do have some updates for you. Our Patricia Baker, our DSS Director, will bring that information to you after she talks about our, most of the citizens' managed care programs. Jesse Smathers is with Viya Health. You may have some other questions for him, too, since we are happy he came to us from Viya. He is, I hope I get this right, if not correct, when you get up here, Jesse, after Ms. Patricia Baker goes, he will talk about more tailored plans that will relate to the behavioral health, mental health side of Medicaid Managed Care. But he is Viya's Community Relations Regional Director. Trish Baker will start us off.
Thank you all for having me. So last month, or several months ago, we talked about, you got an overview of what DSS does. And so, next slide. The Medicaid is a mandated program, and I shared that with you last time. And so tonight, I'm going to talk to you about changes coming to Medicaid, which the state is calling Medicaid Transformation. And I wanted to remind you that Medicaid is a federally mandated program, and it is covered by General Statute 108A and other administrative rules. Next slide. So in Alexander County, we have approximately 78, this number is a little bit off now. I got more current numbers, but there are about 7,800 individuals receiving benefits in Alexander County. And Medicaid is, it provides services for individuals who can't afford healthcare, who meet eligibility guidelines. In addition to getting medical care, individuals who get Medicaid can also qualify for non-emergency medical transportation. And so in Alexander County, Greenway is our primary transportation provider. And this will also change for those individuals who are going through transformation. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And I had some stats for what we had done on average last year. So what is Medicaid Transformation? I told you last, last meeting that the General Assembly enacted Senate Law 245 in 2015, and it directed the state to transition Medicaid from a fee-for-service into a managed care program. And in North Carolina, approximately 1.6 million individuals will be transitioned to the managed care program out of a 2.1 million population receiving Medicaid. In Alexander County, that means about 5,000 of our 7,800 individuals will be going to managed care. And that will start in October through December. Individuals will be enrolling in, they'll have a choice of five plans. And I'll talk to you about what that looks like for them. In February 2020, the state initially had a, had a Phase 1 rollout and a Phase 2 rollout. But because of a lack of state budget, they have blended the phases. And we have one big phase. So individuals in the northern part of the state, Wilkes County being our closest neighbor, were in Phase 1. All those individuals have been getting packets and had been told they were meaning to enroll within just a couple of months, and that their plan would start in November. Well, now those folks are in our rollout, and the entire state will roll out in February of 2020. So there is a little bit of a scare factor here for us because we're worried what, we know the NCFAST system, which is our managed cares, our managed technology system, how we do eligibility. We're worried that that system may not be able to handle the whole state transitioning.
Much does the hang-up in the state budget on Medicaid Transformation impact this rollout?
Well, it was delayed for Phase 1, so that was the first impact. We were on a call last week, and we're told by the Secretary of DHHS that if the state does not have a budget by November, that there will be tremendous delays. Because the state can't pay, all these providers are now going into, instead of fee-for-service, they're getting paid or will potentially get paid for their, you know, number of enrollees. But folks are reluctant to enroll. The providers are not contracting with these plans. So there's, there's a lot of impact to, to the rollout. And so we're sitting back, knowing that our residents are going to be getting letters beginning of October, but what does that mean? Will it actually happen? So there's, there's a lot of uncertainty. And that's a very mild way of saying that.
Well, it's the number one point in the non-negotiable areas of our budget.
Yeah, I mean, Medicaid is, yeah. Our recipients will still get their services, which is a good thing, but they will be getting a lot of mail, and there'll be a lot of confusion. We're already seeing that in the areas that went into Phase 1. Because there are like 18, I looked at all the notices, there are so many notices. And in a family, you may get, you may have one person who's mandatory and another one's who's exempt, or somebody who's excluded. So you're getting all these letters for people in your family, and you just don't know what it means. So we are, we're monitoring that, but we, we don't know what the impact is to us yet.
So members of the same family could be classified differently?
Yes. Because of the way there, there are different classifications of Medicaid. If you're an adult receiving Medicare and Medicaid, you're not going to be part of this rollout, and your letter will say that. If you're a person who's only getting family planning services, you would not be allowed to choose a plan. So there's a lot of different, yeah, there's, there's a lot going on there. So, but we're, we're assuming that everything's going forward, the state will finally have a budget. Enrollment packets start going out to our Alexander County residents October 1, and they have to choose a plan between October 14th and December 13th. If they don't have selected a plan by December 13th, then on December 16th, the state will auto assign those individuals. So they will just go in and look to see where they have used services and try to connect them to a plan. Then after, so this is Phase, I'm calling it Phase 1 of the Medicaid Transformation. Then in July of 2021, and if Jesse wants to talk any about this, the tailored plans begin, and the state is following what we call the LME MCO region now, which is our mental health system, which you guys just spoke about. So there are six standard plan regions, and currently there are seven mental health organizations. So that will also be confusing for our recipients. There are an estimated 300 individuals that will be linked to tailored plans initially in Alexander County, from Alexander County. And that will be July 2021 or after, depending on the rollout. The tailored plans will be responsible for everything, not just the mental health services. They will be responsible for the entire gamut, just like the standard plans will be responsible for the gamut of their members. So what does that mean? I've already spoken a little bit about what it means for Alexander County recipients. But in Alexander County, they will have four prepaid, prepaid health plans to choose one from, and one provider-led entity. And the prepaid plans are WellCare, United Healthcare, Healthy Blue, AmeriHealth, Caritas, and then they, the local plan will be Carolina Complete. And there are 27 counties, including Alexander County, that will have that as a selection. So again, when somebody moves from our county to another county, or comes into our county, they could potentially not even have the same selections that, that we have. We are fortunate, our residents will get the entire selection, all five, but some counties will only have the four. So benefits will not change. They're coming, Medicaid eligibility is still going to be determined by DSS. The services aren't changing. But you, I, I shared with you a handout, just a flyer of what the health plan comparison chart is. So it talks about the five. It's this one, it has the plans across the top. And then on the back, it shows you some of the benefits that, or services that those health plans will be offering. And so they are offering some things like smoking cessation, or Y memberships, and things like that. So we, we don't know the full gamut of, of what those extra benefits are. But the, the standard menu every Medicaid recipient will have regardless of what plan. There will be the basic that every plan will have.
Cell phones and data, that's part of health?
It could be if the provider decided that. But there's also Lifeline, which, that's another program, it's a federal program, that individuals can get a cell phone and have a, a small number of minutes paid for. But that is a federal program, and we just provide verification that individuals have Medicaid or food and nutrition benefits, and they could potentially be eligible for that. But the plan may choose to get that person a cell phone because now they, they can call a doctor and do teledoc instead of going to the emergency room. So there could be different benefits that way. So individuals will have to choose a primary care provider, they will choose a health plan, and they will be able to enroll online, by phone, or by mail. And now here, this slide is the one that, I just wanted to show you the map of where we are in our first wave, which is the standard plan at the top. And then the bottom is the mental health or tailored plan. And you can see where we, we're at. And right now, you know, in 2021, this may look a little bit different, but this is what it looks like right now. And then on the next slide, I'm just sharing some, next slide. Somebody fell asleep. So the changes, I told you about changes, the timelines are in flux because of state budget, but there are some websites, and I've shared those with you, that are dedicated to transformation. And we try to stay updated via those websites. Also, in your handout, you have one page of the Medicaid County Handbook, and it talks about increased foot traffic and call volume to DSSs. Because as I said, all the letters and all the information that individuals have to do is confusing. And many of our recipients rely on DSS to help them. Well, we are now out of that business. They, the state has hired an enrollment broker to do this, but recipients still rely on their worker at DSS to do this. So the state is advising us to expect increased calls and foot traffic. And so we are assessing our ability to absorb that and, and make sure that we can handle that additional volume. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. This is, as I said, in flux. I may be back in two months to say, you know, it's delayed, or, you know, something like that, so.
Trish, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You said that different counties and different plans had different benefits?
Yes.
Is that all of the benefits, or is there more?
No, those are only the ones that they've published. We haven't seen them all. They're still developing a pamphlet for us to have. That's the one I just printed today off the website.
The reason I'm asking is, is the benefits substantial enough to where people that know the system and play the system, where they would come from another county to come here, if they could get more on their benefits?
No.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes. Well, you have the four statewide plans, and so the only plan that we are, we have in addition is the Carolina Complete, and that's the one on the back. You see a few of their benefits. Obviously, they want to be competitive, but the basic insurance package is going to be the same. So I'm not sure that, you know, is a Y membership enough to make you change your home? Because we do verify residents, there are verifications. We do have, just because Medicaid's transformed doesn't mean we, we're not doing our eligibility. So we still have to verify your household and, you know, things like that, so.
Generally speaking, the health plan, like it says on the other side of that, the doctor visit, medical supplies, all, all those things are relatively the same.
They are all the same. They're required, yes.
Regardless of the plan they choose. And then these are the differences in the perks, so to speak.
Some of the differences that we now know. There, there could be more. Things change, you know, we'll, we'll know more about that as time goes on.
And this is, this is not, this is not an Alexander County thing. This is not even a North Carolina, State of North Carolina. This is more flowing down from the federal government, and then these different insurance companies say, hey, we've got these five plans that we're going to do, or these four plans that we're going to do in North Carolina, in all of them, and then...
So Medicaid Transformation is a North Carolina thing.
I understand.
The state had a waiver, so the state chose those five plans. There was a competitive process.
Right. But, but the Medicaid is still coming down from the federal government, correct?
Yes. And the state to get benefits, there, there, the benefits, there's a minimum benefit package that a state has to provide. And in North Carolina, we have, and we've always had what, what other states call more of a Cadillac plan. We offer to Medicaid recipients a better plan than most Medicaid policies in other states. It is a higher level. But that's a state choice. They build on what the feds say you have to have.
Right. So, but these different insurance companies, in order to try to get people to choose them, are adding these benefits. Hey, we're going to give you a free cell phone with 1,000 minutes. I'm just, I'm absolutely shocked. I never knew that this, I mean, I'm just, I can't believe it, so.
Forty dollars for groceries.
What, what will it look like if we have Medicaid expansion in North Carolina? Would this change, or is that, do you know?
Well, Medicaid expanding in North Carolina would mean more individuals in Alexander County who then could be part of this, unless the state decides to have a different tier. Some, some states have gone, have taken Medicaid expansion where individuals buy into Medicaid. So just like you pay an insurance premium, you would do that. So it depends on what the state does. If they take the existing Medicaid package and just say eligibility is now at, let's say, 400% of poverty, then that would mean any recipient who met the eligibility criteria would have these plans to choose from.
So instead of 20% of the population in Alexander County... So instead of 20% of the population in Alexander County on Medicaid, we may have 30, or 40, or 50%?
Right. Depending on the percent. I've seen it's gone all over the board as far as what percent.
And the state already has, as you said, a Cadillac plan?
Well, that, I mean, I don't want to say, it's a very well-rounded benefit package for Medicaid recipients.
Well, we don't get to decide on this, but I'm floored, so, I really am. I didn't know this.
Well, the insurance companies, you know, they chose what they wanted to do. And many of these are nationwide, obviously, these are companies you know, and so they are involved in other states in their Medicaid, their managed care of Medicaid. So they're using some of what they're doing in other states.
But it's safe to say that the taxes used to pay for this would be less if there was not all these perks? But then your health costs would go up.
But remember, it's coming from the feds. I mean, the state has a smaller portion in Medicaid. The bulk of our Medicaid dollars comes from the federal government.
Which comes out of...
It does. I mean, it does.
Yeah.
As my husband reminds me daily.
Follow the dollar, I mean, free cost somebody.
Yeah.
And in North Carolina, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't see this being resolved at state level. The governor's not going to give, and...
And that's why we're sitting back, and we're trying to help our citizens.
Legislature's not going to give either. So I mean, it's total gridlock shutdown on that issue.
I'll give it over to Jesse, I don't want to hog that.
Thank you very much, very informative.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here, Mr. Chairman, Chairman, Mr. Franch, for lining it up. My name's Jesse Smathers, and I'm with Vaya Health, and I have been with some version of Vaya Health since reform started. And we've evolved reform into transformation. And some of the comments earlier, Medicaid in North Carolina is a $12.5 billion program, and about $2.6 billion of that goes towards mental health services. And that's spread across the seven local management entities, managed care organizations, and the comments about these benefit plans that they're, or signing bonuses, really, that they're offering folks. The whole concept behind the managed care model is that states just pay a set rate, period, for everyone, and that they manage health, not health in segregated places. Like currently, what we're doing is managing physical health through Medicaid Direct, is what we're calling it, and we're managing mental health through the LME MCOs. With these transformations, the goal is for one insurance company to manage all of health, and it not be segregated. Because a lot of research shows that when we manage social determinants of health, like housing, transportation, so that folks can have jobs in those pieces, that it costs less to keep people healthy, and we spend, ultimately end up spending less. And those benefits that they showed for the signing bonuses caught us all off guard, I think. And from Vaya's perspective, we're like, well, how are we going to compete with that? Because the 300 people in Alexander County that would likely be assigned to Vaya would also have a choice of choosing one of those plans, if they don't have these options. But one of those plans may not be best for them, because those plans don't include certain services that are really important for the most mentally ill members of our communities. Because many people in your community receive assistive, I'm sorry, assertive community treatment teams, services, and some innovation services for people with intellectual development disabilities, and all those services will be covered through a tailored plan that Vaya will be applying for starting next fall, if the timelines do not change. If there is no budget by November, we're not sure what will happen. And I'll field any questions about tailored plans. I do have a two-page handout to give you all after I finish speaking. It's a good summary about Medicaid Transformation 101. It just touches on the five plans that are available, and the seven MCOs that will be competing for the tailored plan.
Well, that's really going to put you in a bind again. I mean, not stereotyping by any means, but if you take a person who has mental health issues, and is maybe sometimes not always capable of making some decisions, and you present this smorgasbord and say, do you want this, or do you want this, where you're going to get your mental health needs taken care of? Well, they're going to take this, not thinking the other way, or that, well, that's going to be taken care of anyhow. So you're in a bad spot.
We are, unless we figure out through our capitation rates, a way to offer some incentives also. Like the cellphone piece, it is through Lifeline and part of the federal program. That's something that we could definitely add. Some of the services that people receive through specialty mental health services, like the ACT Teams Services, that includes transportation to certain things that others don't have access to. So there's some ways we would be able to compete. Services like the North Carolina Innovations Waiver, there's no way that the insurance companies can compete with that array of services, because it's designed specifically for people with intellectual disabilities that would otherwise be living in institutions. And if they chose to go with a private plan, they would lose their innovation services. So there's some balancing factors. A lot of the challenge is going to be determined with how the department decides to set the per member, per month payments to both Vaya or the provider, the private healthcare companies like Blue Cross and WellCare.
And Mr. Chairman, that was my point, was that you know as well as I do, there's going to be many, not all, there's going to be many people who are going to choose their health plan based on which provides the best cellphone plan. Because that's important to people.
Yeah, I will share this bit of information, too, from Medicaid transformation or rollouts in other states. We're contracting with an outfit called Maximus regarding the enrollment for people, and from their experience in other states, only about 80% of people, I mean, I'm sorry, only about 20% of people actually select a plan. About 80% of the folks that receive the letters don't pay any attention to them and just allow themselves to be auto-assigned. So that's a piece that's happening. And based on some of the letters that had gone out prior to the delay in Phase 1, there was just about 10% of the people that had received letters that had even responded prior to the delay. So a lot of people will end up being auto-assigned and not even be aware of these benefits, most likely.
Does the tail wag the dog, or does the dog wag the tail?
That's a very good question. I can't answer it. As long as I've been in the system, it seems to go back and forth. There has, there's been some improvement since reform started, but there's also been large steps back. For a while, we were closing hospital beds, and now we've been increasing them, like the expansion of Behavioral Health and IDD Unit in Alexander County. Really excited about that, because that will be a specialty hospital in the state that's focused on people with co-occurring mental health and intellectual developmental disability services, and that's something that's really needed, and will probably bring some jobs to Alexander County. So that, yeah, that's hard to answer that question.
Been for a long time in the school system, I've seen up close and personal the need. No doubting the need, intense needs, I mean, extreme. And often seems like it's just a fight to get any kind of services to some pretty needy people, and they go without. And then you have all kinds, you know, criminal, other things spawned from the mental illnesses that are unchecked, but they can't get services, but then you, no, not your fault by any means, but to where you see all kinds of things over here that seem just way out of proportion, and then the people over here that really need services aren't getting them. That's sad. You know, and I guess you could say the same for all types of assistance, you know, whether it be WIC, or, I mean, just whatever. You know, there's so many people where you see a true need, and then so many abuses where you see there not being a need, but things get played.
That's the importance of that resolution y'all passed a little bit earlier, which I greatly appreciate. It's really like a safety net. The state funding that continues to be cut is the safety net for folks that do not seek services until they're forced to because of outside influences, like an involuntary commitment, those kind of pieces. And the cuts that have continued to occur with that have been backfilled with Medicaid savings for the last six or seven years, and we're really at the point where there's no Medicaid savings. And you can't continue to rob Peter to pay Paul, as the saying goes. So I greatly appreciate that resolution, if I did not say that to start with.
And I don't know if you can answer this question, although I'm going to ask it anyway. So with the drug and opioid crisis that we've got in this country right now, there's so many children that are born that are addicted to drugs, and they have problems, you know, behavior problems, physical problems, and that's just getting worse, I would assume. So what do you see, what kind of steps are you guys taking, or what do you see in the future happening to address that kind of thing?
A lot of the steps that have already been taken is a large move towards medication-assisted treatment with regard to the opioid crisis, because a woman that's pregnant that starts taking methadone or buprenorphine in place of the opioid that she's been dependent upon, her child often is not born with an addiction. If he is, it's neonatal abstinence syndrome, and it's really the child's born into withdrawal. And there's not as many negative effects with that if a person goes into medication-assisted treatment as there are with fetal alcohol syndrome. Fetal alcohol syndrome is still the greatest problem with regard to children being born with disabilities. So increased awareness for mothers that are riding that roller coaster of opioids, because the constant highs and lows are really damaging to the child. Getting them into medication-assisted treatment's the best option with regard to that. And there's been a lot of progress made in our state since at least 2014. We've definitely increased treatment options regarding office-based opioid treatment and opioid treatment programs that, I don't know for certain that there is one in Alexander County, I don't think so, but there's some very close in surrounding counties.
But what about for those children that are born?
The children, the great challenge there is trying to keep them, identify them, and then help the parents or the mother stay sober on medication-assisted treatment, or in recovery in some manner, so that we don't have to take those children into the foster care system. Because the foster care system's really being stressed with the number of people that are losing custody of their children. And I know that Trish could speak better to that in Alexander County than I can, but foster care children will be staying in their current programs with the initial rollout of Medicaid transformation, too.
Well, what happens when those kids hit school, and, you know, more of them are identified? Are there programs in place to identify them that you find, I mean, I don't know how this works, I'm trying to figure it out.
Well, there's actually more programs now than there has ever been, probably, in identifying kids early at the age of three and four, because the earlier you engage a child that's got some challenges, it reduces the challenges, at least that's what we're told. Sometimes you wonder if that's true, but, and then, of course, the individual, the supportive, or the special education programs that are supposed to follow children once they're identified. But from my, where I sit, sometimes I see that the school systems are having a great challenge meeting those needs because of the way the rules are set up. You can't get the funding, and sometimes kids with really significant mental health needs end up being homeschooled very brief periods of time, and other systems are trying to find ways to support that child, and it puts an additional stress on the whole family and the communities as a whole, because kids that don't have anything to do are more apt to get in trouble. Thank you all for allowing me. Let me give you this.
I think we could go on and on and on about all these different problems.
Certainly appreciate the good dialogue about a bad topic.
Piece to remember with that is, there's the other side with the medical providers. Just like the Health Department, we're contracting, in process of contracting with all five of these insurance plans, too. So we're trying to make sure all of our local physicians and medical communities, since we're so underserved anyway, are understanding and signing up. Because, as you can tell, how complicated it is. You know, our community, our clients are going to be very confused. And like Trish said, we're being told we kind of have to have hands off. You know, we aren't the people choosing for our clients, we have a broker, and so we're working on maybe some community forums, some training times that we can have the insurance plans here, we can have the broker here, to help our citizens understand and pick a plan. Because the point to some of that is really to work, kind of like when we've worked on our own county employee medical plans, the point is to be proactive and get them healthier. You know, a good example is not to use the emergency room for an ear infection for those children, because that's not necessary, too costly. So, you know, that is the point behind these plans and managing care. But to the client, when they look at those caveats, I'm just like you, you know, either they're not going to pick, and then we have to worry about what if their primary care provider is not in network with that insurance plan that they were automatically enrolled in. And they will have a period that they can change. It's a short, brief time, and then they'll be locked in till the next year. So you're, you know, there's a lot needs to go into that, and there's a lot of education that needs to happen that we're being told we can't really have a lot to do with.
What happens when they go to jail?
Yeah. Then we pay the bill. They are no longer Medicaid eligible. All right, and next up, to move on, next slide, Chad. Community Health Assessment. I meant to move that to last, but obviously not. So Billy Walker is your Assistant Health Director. She's going to talk to you about our 2018 Community Health Assessment.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Billy Walker, for those of you who don't know who I am, and I am the Assistant Health Director. I'm here to present the Community Health Assessment, the Community Health Assessment that we did in the year of 2018. I'm going to talk a little bit about why we do the Community Health Assessment. It is also a mandated assessment that we have to do every four years, and we actually go out and survey the community. So this year, we collected the data through Survey Monkey, and we surveyed the community, then we took that and analyzed that data, and then, along with community partners, we selected health priorities. The next slide. How did we distribute this? We did primary and secondary data collection. And so we ran this from September of 2017 through January of 2018. We put this in the local paper. We also did web-based formats and put it on our Facebook page. We put it on our county website. We also sent this email to county employees and other county partners, or community partners. We did paper versions as well. For those who didn't have access to the electronic versions, we did paper versions, and we distributed those through the Health Department and at local community events and health fairs. The secondary data collection, we gathered that through, from local, state, and national resources. The next slide. These are our representatives that sit on our partnership. It's collaborative effort. These aren't all of them, they're just some of the bigger ones. We also offer spots for citizens to come in and help us with this as well. Lots of churches and... Lots of churches and organizations are on our committee. Next slide. The statistical information that we gathered, we had 507 responses that were collected. That wasn't a large amount. We would have loved to have more, but some people just refused to sit there and go through those questionnaires with us. But 95% of the ones that we got back were complete. So we sat down with our members, and we ranked those, the information that we got, and we did it by the severity, the magnitude, urgency, and then intervention effectiveness. The survey respondents were asked to go by the top 10 health issues. And those are cancer, obesity and overweight, heart disease, diabetes, depression, mental health, dental health, lack of physical activity, access to care, ability for healthy foods, and then Alzheimer's. So then the next slide. Out of the data that was collected, they chose these three as our top priorities for the next four years. And so what we'll do as a Health Department is, the next four years, we work on trying to improve these health issues. So the first one, and you can go there, yeah. The first one is mental health. And that's been discussed a lot here tonight. And so we feel like we wanted to do something for people who were in our facility. And so we applied for grants. And we are starting the second year of that grant. And we are hoping to start seeing patients January 1 with our mental health program. We also have a kiosk in the Health Department that Via put there, and they can go in and answer questions. And if there's issues, there's a phone there, and they can call someone and have a referral. We also do lots of community outreach and education. We did, we held a mental health first aid training for community partners. We're really excited for the mental health program through our Health Department. We used the first year of the funding to create a clinic for this. So she has a counseling room for children, and then she has a counseling room for adults. So we're really excited about that. Substance abuse is the next one. We have assisted with take-back initiatives with our local law enforcements. We have helped EMS with grants for Narcan. And we actually had a grant also for lock boxes, and we gave those out free to community members. So we also want to increase, you know, awareness, still going into the schools, still doing education, and still doing the outreach. Healthy lifestyles. This, again, is where we work with the community. There was the farmers markets, the Farm-to-Table Initiative, and of course Rocky Face. They have a variety of activities that people can go and do. We work with our parks and recreation, trying to get outreach through that. And of course, our county is a big running county that offers lots of running events for healthy living. The last two slides, I'm gonna just compare 2014's Community Health Assessment to what 2018, the results came. They're almost identical. I mean, mental health is still number one. Substance abuse is right there with it. And, you know, those go hand in hand. So healthy lifestyles, of course, preventing and treating obesity and heart disease are the major factors to that. We added this one just to let you see that risk population. And again, they're the same. We did put non-English speaking in there as well, because we felt like that put some people at risk, because they weren't getting the translated version of their medical needs assessed. So, and that's it.
Lot of information.
Yes, yeah. Well, it's 41 questions, so you can see why some people refuse to sit there and fill those out. But we want to give the community an opportunity to say, this is what we think or we see is going on in the community. And that helps them be a part of the fix, too.
Do you have any idea on the, starting January the 1st, on building the mental health program? Do you have any idea of how many folks that could actually be? Do you have any way to figure that out?
Well, the reason we really started this is because about 75, and that's a low estimate of our maternal population, is on some form of drugs during pregnancy. And
75%?
75%, mhm. Yes. And that's just who we see.
That's just on pregnancy?
On pregnancy, mhm. And
Wait, clarify that. That are on some sort of illegal drug? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, opioids, alcohol, some type of, and it used to be, when I first started 16 years ago, we were worried about alcohol and marijuana use. And now it's cocaine, meth. Yeah, yeah, it's heavy drugs. And so I think probably the last two years, it's been just a huge burden for LeAnn. And, you know, she's wanting to help fix this. And lots of times when they're here in our facility, they address some of these issues, but we can't help them with it. We can only refer them out. And of course, we have limited resources in Alexander County. And we thought, you know, if we had somebody in our building that could help them right then, they would be more likely to get the help. And so that's what the initiative, that's where it started. So I see, it's hard to come up with a number, but I see, I see our, we actually hired a LCSW, Licensed Clinical Social Worker, and we're really excited about that. And she, she's gung ho. So we're, please stop by and see the facility, because we're very proud of it.
We're safe then, assuming that the vast majority of this will be towards pregnant women?
Targeted, but we're willing to help anyone that, we're gonna start slow and only do
Plenty of work for that person with pregnant women alone.
Yes, yes. And we're gonna start with just our clients to see how it goes. But yes, I mean, there's enough to go around for every, we don't have enough mental health resources in Alexander County at all. I mean, we could be here all night talking about the issues, so.
Let me, and the reason I said illegal drugs, I thought, I couldn't believe you said 75% where, I thought you might have meant, because he asked a mental health question, I thought you might have meant some sort of mental health medication. What, I'm asking a question, and I know you don't have the answer to, but I'm gonna ask it, because it really bothers me for these women to be on drugs and to be pregnant, and they don't give a damn about those kids.
Yeah, yeah.
And, I mean, that, that just, I know what I'd like to do, but if you lock one of them up, then the word gets out, and nobody comes in for any sort of healthcare. What kind, what's the answer to that? What do you do? I mean,
I think the first thing
How do you get them off, how do you get them off the drugs when they, you know, they actually don't care?
I think the first thing is realizing that there's an issue, number one, and getting them help as soon as we can, number two. And so that, being in-house, is gonna, we hope, speed that process up. You know, there's a lot of negative vibes in the community with different entities, but I would say our clients really like coming to the Health Department. They like us. And so I think that's gonna help, too. We already have a Pregnancy Care Manager, and she's a social worker. And she is also on that managed care end, where she's making sure they're going to their appointments, that they're doing the things they should be doing. And so we're hoping that the Licensed Clinical Social Worker on that end can start with the counseling piece as well. You know, I'm right there with you. I have friends who are schoolteachers, and they just have a hard time in these classes, because these kids now are coming to school. And they have men during pregnancy had the effects of that drug. And I think we're just now seeing what that's doing to our population, so.
I don't think we've seen, seen all of it yet. But I mean, I think they ought to be locked up for a long time. I have, but, you know, you want, you want the children to be, it's more about taking care of the kids than it is punishing the woman, but
And access to care. I mean, I think that's our role, is getting them the access to care that will help them.
I just couldn't imagine, I just can't imagine. It just
You should come and spend a day with us.
I know. And I, I don't, I don't know how you do it, but thank you for doing it.
Well, it's so severe now that the school system has to have social workers.
Mhm, yeah, yeah.
And when we went to school, that was nonexistent.
Right.
I just, I feel so sorry for those babies and toddlers and little kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Any other, I'm sorry, I didn't mean you had to leave us. Thank you. Any other questions for Billy?
I'm glad you made that point, too, about not, not making it so punitive that our pregnant moms don't enter prenatal care. Because, you know, if we can get them into prenatal care and we can intervene with services is our point. And that is accurate numbers. Two years ago, we took every prenatal patient in the Health Department, and we hand-counted. And it scared us to death, too. And that may not just be one substance. Sometimes it was domestic violence, mental illness, and their drug screen would light it like a Christmas tree. So it is scary. But many won't help. They don't have transportation, they don't keep appointments. So by having it, making it simpler, readily available, we're doing handoff. You know, the clinic staff will walk them across the hall to the counselor. You know, there's no reason not to get that help and get it immediately. So we're hoping that has a huge impact. But it is. It is definitely a need, and we are very excited. Still building a lot of those contracts, policy and procedures. There's always so much to do with a new program, but we are ready to go. And next, to wrap us up, is your Senior Center report. Christine Gates will tell you what's happening at the Senior Center.
Oh.
Oh.
On a live-moir note.
Wow, yeah. I feel like I really have an easy job now. I can't believe what you guys are dealing with. Okay. I'm gonna kind of alter my presentation. So the next slide is the mission statement. The Alexander County Senior Center, I'm just gonna read it, is a county organization that provides a focal point for aging resources, as well as the opportunities to extend independent living and enrich the quality of life for older adults in Alexander County. As a friendly and vibrant activity center for seniors, we strive to be a remedy for loneliness and isolation. Okay. And you can go on past that slide? Okay. You guys have seen this before. Medicare did something that only the federal government can do. They overhauled the Medicare website for Medicare Part D this year. I wasn't gonna include it in this, because I didn't even know it was gonna happen very much before I put this together, and then I didn't think that it was gonna be that big of a deal. Oh, it's huge. We had two days of training last week, and there's nothing working for 2020 yet. So that's kind of a surprise when we're taking in Medicare sheets. We had to hold off on creating the intake sheets to get everybody through to get to a million dollars or somewhere in that neighborhood. We had to hold off until the last training and then do the best we can. We may get more training, like around the 1st of October, and open enrollment's gonna start October 15th. So they overhauled the website. They're, they're going to, they're asking us, the ship coordinating sites, they're asking the ship coordinator or the ship volunteers all over the state and in Raleigh, they're asking insurance agents, and there's one more group of people, I can't remember, to set up Medicare accounts for everybody in the state and everybody in the country. So they want us to create a My Medicare account on the Medicare.gov website. So we have these little questions. Do you already have an account? Do you give us permission to set up the account? If you do, circle yes, put your initials here. If you already have the account, what's your username and password? And then a little secret question they've got to have the answer to, they write the answer to, and we use it to set up the account. We've only had two days of taking in sheets for Medicare open enrollment, and we've already seen 125 people. And that was Friday and today. So 125 people have come in and asked us the very same questions. We've given them a two-page sheet of the explanations of their options. They've got three options. I want to tell you guys this, because I'm sure you're gonna get some questions through the, from the community, like, why is a senior center fooling around with my Medicare website thing? They're not gonna know even what it's called. There's a redundancy on the Medicare.gov website. If you go to Medicare.gov, I know this is getting way out in the weeds, up in the top right-hand corner, like when you log into any Amazon account or anything like that, you log in up at the top right. That's one way to log into my Medicare and create an account. But there's another way, if you go through halfway down the page, when you're looking for a drug plan finder, that's another option of setting it up, but they've given it the same name. So we have top right, My Medicare.gov account, and then we have a middle-of-the-page through the Plan Finder account. They're not really supposed to mix, and they don't. When we log in through the Plan Finder, all we can see is just a drug list, and then we have to kind of fiddle around with it, manipulate it, and take out like antibiotics that they took or something, just for a week, to get down to what they take on a, on a monthly basis. It's very complicated. It seems a little overly complicated, but only the way the federal government can do it is, it's just a beautiful masterpiece. So they keep telling us, oh, it's live, go ahead and use it. Well, there's still nothing there for 2020. So we're just taking in sheets for the year, and we have no idea how that's gonna impact that dollar savings. We're not even sure how many people we're gonna be able to help completely. Because by the time you set up this account and you weed through, did you have an email address, or did you not have an email address when you set it up? Can you track down the family member that set it up for you and get the username and password from them and then let us know? It's, it's been fun so far. So, we'll see how it all pans out. On the next slide, I don't have the July, I mean, the August numbers up there, but I think August was 15,000, which makes us about 260,000 savings for, uh-oh. My graph, my little pie chart's a little off. But anyway, you have the other numbers. So we have about 160, or $260,000 savings, and last year it was 258,000. So we're, we're on track. Don't they fooled with Medicare? And then on this one, I didn't have the, all of the data when I put this together. So you can see that we've got another good month of, at the Senior Center, I believe, five, 1,582 duplicated people, 433, that's down a little bit. I don't know if the weather was so good, or everybody was at the beach. So we're not sure what happened. Kristy in Bethlehem, her numbers, I've got those now, 458 is her Bethlehem duplicated number, and then her unduplicated is 116, 113. And we didn't have anybody at Stony Point, because everybody went on vacation, so they didn't, they didn't open. The next one is all locations. All right, you can see, is August there? Yep, 1,582. So, oh, I wish I had it. Chad, can you, like, point to where 15, or August is on that chart? It's the blue line? Or can you guys see it?
We can see it.
Okay. It's, it's right there in the middle of those five years. Like I said, I don't know if everybody was busy in their garden Like I said, I don't know if everybody was busy in their garden, or if there was storm, that residual storm efforts that people were still cleaning up about from the last, that big rain, but it's down a little bit. Hopefully they'll all be back. Okay, so if we go to the next one, Bethlehem, that one, she's well above, um, on the new, on the new chart. For August, for her, she is four-hundred-and-fifty-eight people, so she's above that yellow dot. Again, another banner month for her. Oop, I'll get it later. Okay, so now, um, aside from the Medicare overhaul, right at the beginning of open enrollment, you, as you guys can see this, we've got activities that go on at the Senior Center, and, um, like, exercise, we've got yoga and Tai Chi, a cardio, uh, workout that they do, that's more like aerobics, and line dancing. Um, in that Tai Chi, I do wanna give you just a little story. We had a lady in Bethlehem who came to Tai Chi twice a week, every week since we opened the doors. She never, I, I, she may have missed one day, but I'd, I'd be surprised. She had a stroke, and her recovery was so fast. She had a significant stroke, and her recovery was really fast, and her doctors and nurses told her, if she had not been doing Tai Chi, that she would not be in the condition she was in, and they were very thankful that she did Tai Chi. So I just wanna pass that along, because every time I see her in Bethlehem, she reminds me, please make sure you tell everybody you can, that that Tai Chi really made me recover quickly from that stroke. And she's back to doing Tai Chi again. Um, and I thought you guys might wanna know that. So two, um, Matter of Balance is one of those, um, it kind of goes along with Tai Chi. Ooh, you gotta go back a slide, Chad. There you go, number two. Matter of Balance is a, an evidence-based training program, and it's usually eight weeks long, and they do a little bit of Tai Chi in it, they do some stretching, they learn how to fall, if they were to fall, and if they do fall, how they can climb their way back up. Like, if they're near a chair, they can start pulling themselves up on a chair and get up off the floor to get to the phone to call somebody, and they don't need to just lay there. Um, we offer that either in Taylorsville or Bethlehem once a year, and sometimes we've got twenty-five or thirty people in a class, and sometimes we get two. You just never know what we're gonna get, but everybody loves it. Uh, number three, the social activities. Everybody enjoys those. A lot of that's card playing. They play, they play a couple times a week, um, in both locations, Taylorsville and Bethlehem. Uh, they pick their own games, they kind of have their own groups. Christie has about twelve to sixteen or eighteen people that will come in and play hand and foot. Uh, in Taylorsville, we play Pea Knuckle, Dominos, other card games, and they thoroughly enjoy it, thoroughly, uh, Back Alley Bridge. Along the lines of more social activities is the, the catered lunch that we have. We've got bingo that's free for everybody. I typed, it's a free-for-all, but it's just free. I, I had to chuckle at that. Well, that's pretty cute. Um, but they come in, they have a Bojangles biscuit, and some desserts, and a fruit, and then they play bingo and enjoy themselves for about two hours or so, maybe a little longer. We've got van trips that Christie drives on, so we take them to all kinds of locations around the region, and, uh, places of interest. Sometimes we repeat them year after year, because they say, oh, I wanna go on that again, don't ever cancel that trip. So we have a hard time adding trips, 'cause they love the, they love them. Uh, and puzzles, completing puzzles. Sounds kinda weird, but we've got a puzzle table that's out, and there might be somebody there who's there for half a day, all day long, who just does puzzles. But that's pretty fun. They talk, they read the paper, they enjoy it. Okay, so now for, now the next slide, there we go. All right. Art and music. So, um, there is a wide variety of art and music that goes on. We've got the Musicians Jam that comes in once a week, and we've got some pretty fantastic musicians that play, uh, and inter, they entertain everybody. There's, uh, two needlework classes. We've got one in Taylorsville, one in Bethlehem, and they do a wide variety, crochet, knit, tat, cross-stitch, quilt. I think we have eight quilters that bring their machines to Bethlehem once a week, and use all the big tables, and enjoy that immensely. And we've got card making, scrapbooking, that all happens. These are all classes that they've got their own followings for, and they just return week after week after week and enjoy it. And if you thought you were gonna cut that to add something else, no, you are wrong. So, seasonally, we have a computer class, and usually, well, it, it's, it's in various forms, as you can see up there. There's, uh, somebody will come in and teach a smartphone class for maybe once a month. Somebody will come in and do two to four weeks of, uh, Windows class for our seniors, and take a lot of questions and answers, and they usually schedule those for about two hours, because people can't get enough of that. And then six, uniform senior games. Are you guys familiar with senior games? Yes? Okay, good. All right. So we've got, we've got talented artists and musicians that, that, uh, participate, as well as the athletics. And then they go on to the regional and state, uh, games. I know that somebody has completed, competed in the National Games, but I haven't heard about it recently. And I think that's it. Six is it, right? Is it a thank you? There you go. See, short and sweet. Sit tight for those new Medicare numbers, we're gonna do the best we can, and if anybody asks, yes, we do have, the whole country has to set up a My Medicare doc, or My Medicare account through the My Medicare.gov website. Hang on, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it couldn't just be one program having major federal or state overhauls. It needs to be everybody, right? Just spread the fun around. Our next meeting date is November the fourth, and that is our agenda. Any last questions?
Leanne, I'm sorry. I, I, yes, I do. And I'm, I'm not beating a dead horse here, but I just was thinking about something. Um, like I said, you know, I'd like to lock those people up that, you know, the women that do drugs, that are pregnant for a long time, but, um, I, I'm, I'm, it just bothers me that seventy-five percent that you see are on some sort of drug that's gonna hurt that child for the rest of its life. It's gonna impact the rest of its life. Um, is there anything that you guys are doing as far as identifying, hey, person A is on meth and drinking lots of alcohol, and when she has that baby, you know, keeping tabs on the baby, or...
There's a lot in place.
Okay, all right.
Yes, there, um, as far as our protocols, there's, there's screenings across the board. Um, we do drug screenings, we, um, and, and a lot of, a lot of our clients trust us, and we are, like Billy was trying to allude to, we are a trusted provider. And we, we won't, I hear what you're saying, and yes, it is very alarming, but we're there to help. So we're very much on the helping, and most of the time, they will tell us where they need help, and many ask for help and are wanting to do things differently. And we do have an in-county Suboxone referral, um, and we do those referrals, because we do try to get mom on, yes, it's still a chemical, but it's at least a chemical that causes less damage. Um, we don't see, luckily, as much alcohol, um, but we do intervene. We do intervene, we do track them, um, and there is, I guess, a couple of years ago, the state has a protocol that all newborn infants are screened. So, you know, the Department of Social Services get those referrals, and there are tracking in place. We have lots of managed care, um, nurses and social workers that follow those babies to make sure that they, um, you know, get the care they need sooner, um...
Well, and, and what I'm saying is...
There's lots of interventions. We're working hard.
Do those, do those social workers, you know, work with the school as they're entering kindergarten and work with via...
Yes, we get them referred to Head Start, early Head Start. Um, you know, yes, there's still children that fall through the cracks. A lot of times, it's children that have moved here from other states, other counties, um, but yes, there are lots of interventions.
Well, the best one is to get those women off of drugs and...
Exactly. And get them in treatment, get them...
And you probably couldn't even report them if no one, you, I mean HIPAA...
We, well, you know, North Carolina doesn't recognize the unborn as having rights until they're born, so there is no teeth behind any regulations for the Department of Social Services for the unborn child. And that's another big topic that I'm sure we would agree to not like.
Right.
But, but we work through all that to, you know, try not to scare the, the mother off from getting care. We want her to get prenatal care. If she's not in care, we can't help. Then you're gonna have a baby that's gonna stay in the neonatal intensive care unit, you know, cost millions even before it gets to come home, or go into foster care. Um, so we, we are, we've got lots of areas, and I think the consolidation's been a piece of that, too, that we're, we've always worked closely together with our Department of Social Services to make sure we make those referrals, we let them know when there's issues, we're on task force together, and that's only getting stronger as we work together, 'cause that's our goal, too, is to help these unborn babies, even though the state may not recognize it, we do. What happens in utero is so important, so we make sure they're, you know, in the WIC program. Our social workers and our nurses are tracking them, making home visits. You know, it doesn't do a lot of good if they, you, they have food stamps in WIC, but they go home to no electricity and no place to put two gallons of milk. So we, we are definitely holistic. We look at that whole, whole client, that whole family, and as Jesse talked about, a lot of it's those social determinants of health. Um, the great thing about Medicaid Managed Care is maybe there'll be more transportation help, because that's a lot of the issues our clients have, is, you know, we see them, but they may not keep that mental health appointment because they can't get there. So having it within the Health Department, the same day they come in for their prenatal care, having that all together, I think's gonna be a huge, huge help. And that's why we wrote that grant, is to help intervene. The more we can help that baby, the more it saves us, and we can use those funds other places. Cuts down on the school system needs, 'cause I'm telling you, I have a, I can't imagine those teachers with five or six kids, and it may be half the class, that are ADHD or have behavioral issues.
You're throwing, you're throwing one starfish back in the ocean, because it's not just prenatal care, it's the, it's the birth to five as well, and the school system's getting flooded with eight, ten, twelve kids in a kindergarten class that have extreme needs, and, and you, you, you need three or four people plus the teacher to have one class, and that's not there.
Well, and, you know, even our Head Start program has worked to add mental health services in their program, because exactly what you said, um, it's that whole compendium of age from, from, with the whole family, from birth to death, and all members of that family. We have plenty of work ahead of us, but one starfish at a time, one pregnant mom at a time, one baby at a time. You need, I wish I could say we fixed everybody, but unfortunately, we're trying.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in November.
Now, one thing, we did used to eat at health board meetings.
This time, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143 dash three-eighteen dot one-one-A, four, five, and six economic development contractual personnel, and we will reconvene only to adjourn. Do you have a motion to...
I move second.
Any discussion in favor, please raise your right hand. We are moved to closed session.